Call this King William Board Supervisor Budget Session to order. Go ahead and. Oh, we we need approval for electronic participation by Mr. Greenwood for first time.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve electronic participation. The supervisor Greenwood, due to a personal matter out of town.
Right, in the discussion, Christian.
Mr. Miskalski.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. Do we do we have him on that?
He just arrived, yes.
Mr. Greenwood, can you hear us? Is he there now? Is it Mr. Green? They work their nuts.
It says connecting to audio. There he is.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hey.
All right. All right, and we need to do a roll call with.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Mr. Moran.
Here.
Mr. Miskalski.
Here.
Chairman Hodges.
All right, has everyone reviewed the meeting agenda? And if so, how much?
Just a challenge, adoption of the meeting agenda.
I guess.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Miskalski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. All right, work session matters. He is 2022 King William County Museum reporter, Deborah Moore. She gets out of order, you're gonna handle it.
I don't think so.
Well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Supervisors and County Staff, you have before you.
Hold on one second. Mr. Greenwood, you gotta be careful with Mike. I think you might be hitting somebody. All right.
We have before you to report that I gave to the county for the museum for 2022, and so I just wanna. I'm gonna talk into this thing. Oh, oh, sorry. Hi, Stephen, and I wanna talk, tell you. The highlight. What's the. Open in March showcase for our changing the exhibit. To the life of the Gregory ordinary. Okay. We wanna thank Rebecca Townsend, Ann Jackson, Chris Harris, Martha Ann Hart, and Jim. For their hard work in updating the museum. It was first advertised in King William County during the colonial era that Holt. We are in the process of coinciding with an archaeological dig that's taking place outside the courthouse. That's attempting to find the exact location of the tavern. We have docents that work throughout the year and they. They come, excuse me, they have docents that work throughout the year in the museum. They kick back.
It's I think it's my agreement with Mike.
Oh, okay. Some visitors come to inquire about their ancestry, to learn more about old homes and research any records that might be available. We've had visitors as far as Lawrence, Kansas, and Tampa, Florida, and we've had. People researching all the way from California about their ancestors here. And we also have answers to email that come in. The museum was open for a total of seventy days. The volunteer hours totaled five hundred and fifty hours. We also have student community service that totaled fifty-four point five hours, and they do inventory, bookkeeping, and lighthouse keeping. The museum is open most Sundays from one to five and by appointment from March to November. We also have been open to coincide with the archaeological dig days from the Fairfield Foundation. We had a grand opening in. July, and we put on a skit that depicted the Tavern Museum, and it was written by Martha. I mean Rebecca Townsend and Ann Jackson, and we dressed in colonial period. It was Martha Ann Hart, Mike Hart. Rebecca Townsend and myself, and it was a very nice skit, and then we entertained the historical society in the museum and on the lawn. We also opened for the Daughters of the American Revolution and did the same skit and had a luncheon that was served on the portico. A longstanding tradition that was continued when the Adams Edwards family held the reunion in August under the trees. We also give tours to Christadelphian Church and Quinton Church. And Martha Ann Hart attended a workshop in the for museums in St. John's Church in May. We wanna send out a special congratulations to Ann Jackson, a longstanding member who obtained the Virginia Daughters of the American Revolution District Nine's Regent of the Year Award for twenty twenty-two. And we want to thank Gene Campbell, who's been writing articles for the. King William Country Courier about interesting people and places. His articles on historical places are generally unknown to the younger generation, but well-known to those of us who've lived here for a while. We also would like to thank the King William Board of Supervisors Resolution, twenty-two deaths, seventy-eight, that honored the life and accomplishments of Queen Elizabeth II. There's too many other accomplishments that to go over, but those are just a few. But most of all, the museum greatly appreciates the continued support from the county. Thank you for renewing the county lease agreement and information technology contract. Feel free to contact us at eight oh four seven six nine nine six one nine for any further information or a scheduled visit. We wanna have this next. With any questions.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Greenwood, do you have anything? Mr. Greenwood.
No, I don't have anything.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Brown.
Oh, you're also Dr. Brown.
I'm Dr. Brown.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Congratulations on your good.
Yes, for my advanced degree here. I'm Dr. Brown sends his apologies for not being able to attend tonight, but he also teaches in Williamsburg. This is just a highlight of what he submitted. And he says that the purpose of the King William County Historical Society is to collect, interpret, and preserve those things relative to the history of the county. While acting as a caretaker of artifacts for the lives and traditions of the people have gone before us. So he says, we also have a hundred members that we manage the courthouse complex and also Christadelphian Church and Quinton Church. Some of his goals and accomplishments that he's done this year, the historical society has been formatting and transcribing the burned records books, and they're up to book four now. So that's one of the big things, and they support the King William Museum. And they also take care of Christadelphian Church. The financial support for the county welcome sign, they accomplished that. And they gave technical support for King William County regarding the King William Fire Tower lookout. So they're working on putting that into the historical district. And going forward, they want to continue the work with King William County and provide technical advice and community engagement regarding the care, maintenance, and public accessibility of the King William Fire Lookout Tower. They want to continue the archaeological survey and excavation with significant public involvement at the courthouse tavern site and associated site. And continue transcription and editing of the burned records book. So altogether, there's nineteen books that'll go from seventeen oh two to eighteen eighty-five. And if you ever wanna copy, you can either get one in the books office or the museum's office. Any questions?
Mr. Greenwood, you have anything?
Nope, I don't have anything, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the EDA request for a new position. Even.
Good evening, how y'all doing? Chairman. Hope you for let me back in the shark tank, I feel like here for the second time. All right, I have Mr. Charlie Pearson from the EDA also to talk with me. Thank you for letting us come for the second time. Took notes from the first time, and hopefully we can answer many of your questions. Um, did you, were you sent the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. In the job description?
No, we got, we did get that in.
Okay. Didn't get the job description? Oh, you did, okay. Thank you so much. All right, so this is just kind of recap from the first time, not much has changed on this, but the general purpose and goal. So we've changed it, we initially started with a specialist, but we took the recommendation of the the lower pay that we were going after. And by changing it to a director role, that would bump up the salary, which would get a higher caliber individual, hopefully. So that's why we're now the Economic Development Director. Grow existing businesses, establish new businesses, be marketing, and the county site characterization, utility infrastructure, and grant writing. All of these things will increase B-hole, measuring tools, and commercial value, so basically building something on raw supply and get more tax dollars. Next slide, please. All right, so this gets into kind of answering some of the old questions from last time. So the requirements to economic development director, so we're looking, this is metrics here. So we're looking for four in-person visits in the county weekly. So it gives us two annually annually. So the first three to six months, you really wanna ramp up this individual seeking the businesses we have currently. Cause that's where we feel we can see a lot of the. They're growing the ones we have, and basically get touch on them. In addition to that, in the weekly structure of this individual, three to five prospect calls, that could be phone or in person. That could be traveling, they hand over Henrico, or it could be picking up the phone and reaching out to different industries that we wanna target, like lightning factory. And the big thing here is that we're gonna get a lot of calls annually, and this is really just a minimum, I'd like to see more of this personally. You know, understand why maybe some weeks it might be down, but some weeks they're hitting the phones, you know, really trying from a future business force, and it's all to create a pipeline. We're looking to sign two new businesses in the county in the first year. I think that's low personally from what comes in the front door. You know, I think we get big movement that organically. And then convert two home-based businesses to brick and mortar. We do have a lot of home-based businesses on the board. They're kind of working with them to get them into a storefront on a main road or some other setting like that. That would be added plus because we do have some really large home-based businesses. Budgeting for the EDA. So just working with this during our meetings, helping us with budget. Uh, since we will hopefully then be bringing in more money and creating opportunities for the EDA to make part. Charlie, you want to take over?
All right, then attending EDA meetings as well as the DOS meetings, so we'll have recommendations and keep y'all informed what's going on. Caller reports for the DOS, so each quarter, if y'all wanna want more to see what he's doing, how he's doing, if he's meeting the goals we have set. Cross calibration with zoning, commission of revenue, and treasures. I think this is important because we're losing a lot of. Of tax dollars, we're once not talking to the other. When we get a new business that needs to be brought to commission of revenue, then to treasury with office. I think this is something real important that we looked at, talked about where we're losing some of that here in the county, but no communications. Required to take part in the county travel. If he needs, if we have a caller here, he can use this one if it don't, might have to use his own personal vehicle, so he can go see the different businesses and see if we can drum some of these people in the county. Also helping with county events that we do, whether it's EDA or other, or the person get out, he seen and talk to different people, I think is very important. And one thing we talked about with Mr. Ash Grant was a roundtable. And me and Kenny was talking about kind of like a free man with the county administrator. Treat people from EDA having a maybe once a month meeting to see what's going on, what he has found out, how do we need to go, what can we do? And before we go on the next page, I'd like to see if we have any questions and tack each page as we go.
Mr. Chair, I know, so what type of projection do you have in year two? I know that you, Kenny, I think you said something about year one was two, two to three new businesses. So what are you looking at in the future?
Basically, we discussed at EDA meeting, we're open to the future. Once he gets rolling, we get a really active person, basically his salary being paid for all the business we're bringing in. So we're hoping, it just ain't too, we're hoping it's more than quite a few that he's actually earning the salary for the county.
But you're gonna answer your question, I just wanna make sure I wasn't jumping too far ahead. So the the next slide, the idea that this individual can be paid in his office, any new business that comes in. They'll be reporting to the administrator. So organically, just from the phone calls that we get that come through the building, the front door, I feel very confident and greater than to new businesses. I mean, when I say two, I'd also like to see them physically, he or she from the business up themselves, we have phone calls or networking. So to, I I put some higher dumping initially, in those reel back a little bit, you know, the first of the first year, but uh. I think I think we've got enough opportunity coming in that. But but to answer your question, I I don't wanna put ten to fifteen of businesses and two hundred thousand dollars, you know, tax and maybe. So I think that at first in the first year, that's a lot of new degrees. I think that that potential is unpayable, and stuff they work on in the first year may pay off in year three.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't wanna make you jump ahead either, so I'll try to keep my mouth shut until y'all finished it. We'll go ahead. Unless somebody else has something.
Yeah. Mr. Greenwood.
No, I'm gonna wait till the end, cause.
What did you say?
Be away too.
Oh, okay. And I guess I would have a question right now, Mr. Ash Grant. Do you have a place right now? To put.
An office? Yes, we can create an office, yeah.
Just one.
All right, thank you. All right, so I said we skipped ahead, the this individual, he or she will report for report to this building daily. But will not be like a work from home. And then they will be coming here, reporting here, then traveling out, they will report to the administrator every day. They will work on. They will work together and have great gold and rubber planning, just so that it's not the EDA making and managing this individual. So that there's eyes and such.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the only thing that I would. Say that if if this position would fall underneath county administration. The individual would be and serve in the vein that other supervisors and department heads and and directors serve. You know, the responsibilities of of those roles would be clear. They would have their own job description and would certainly. Conduct business as you would any any department director would. This is a little bit of a shift from where you started your discussions weeks ago, you know, the EDA. I believe had an understanding that they might supervise this position and report directly to this position. Now understand, it's being suggested that it reports to the county administration, which we have no objection to, that's the board's. A pleasure, but just keeping in mind that if you're gonna have an individual that is. At that status and underneath all the rights and privileges that a county employee and or a director has. The supervision has to be clear that they will be treated equally as any other director would be or or manager that heads up a department.
So. If I understand you correctly, this individual will be basically your employee. You would control discipline. Or whatever, whatever needed to be addressed.
That would be my understanding, that if if that employee is reporting to county administration, it would be the same as any other employee.
Is this, is this what y'all had in mind?
Yes, and then on the flip side of that, not really flip side, but when it comes to an EDA meeting, this person will work with the chair, vice chair to establish the agenda. It's like some of the load office account staff that you know currently, it's really gonna be two parts. They're not necessarily gonna run them, you still have, you know, chair and vice chair from the from the group, but they'll be the ones facilitating the report for it.
And the other side, I see a plus to Mr. Ash Grant, cause part of his stuff was. Development and trying to make industry in different places he's been, and so with his knowledge and. Stuff he has, I think would be a plus for the EDA to have him under him, learning the technologies that he already obtained.
And at the end of the day, um, now we go back to. You know, this is a team effort. You know, this one individual needs to work with the commission of revenue, treasure shop, and building and planning. So it basically the conduit, let's just say, to jump through and get the job done. So hopefully maybe work to four and five months, we can come down to two months. Uh, get a quick turnaround, maybe a better feeling about onboarding, you know, big new business. Um, so things that you. All right, so the budget app, so since we had to public the salary. When we go to the director role, we have seventy-three thousand, two hundred sixty-three thousand, the specialists, the blessed, that's what are presented for time. So if we just took a median of that, eighty-five thousand, roughly thirty percent comes at forty-five, five or thirty-six. And and then twenty thousand dollars, we possibly have to make a give back. That would be for my own, which is expensive and travel, if we work like trade show or travel encourage. And that's where we get to the one hundred thirty thousand five hundred. I understand was probably supposed to be someone in the seventy higher for it, and then also with twenty thousand dollar number. I mean, all three numbers fell down, but we want to use as a, I mean, we need to buy a location there. And have a budget. And then to the next slide.
All right, I know there's funds in the, I thought capital fund. We was asking tonight to, for one quarter of it, which would be thirty-two thousand, six hundred twenty-five, so maybe we can have a person hired by April one. And that would keep him going until the new budget was passed. And that's what we gave proposal at the last meeting to Steve for for the budget, but it's what we're asking for right now, so we can start this process of looking for somebody.
So we can have a timeline. With a, according for a person's age nine. And we have a job script, everybody, they want to be good hire, get to understand with those supplies to interview. If they're currently in forty, at least they're three forty, or three thirty, or twenty. That's why we thought, best case, if we have a break, maybe we could move first, it couldn't even later, so we can get closer to that next fiscal year. But we would use capital fund to bridge the gap. Hopefully in three months. I'm not sure if there's desire from you to take to always face the business, individual, he or she, at that point. It would just be in this situation to bridge the gap.
Oh. Mr. Chair, I know, originally, I think y'all were asking for a specialist.
Yes.
So how did, how did we arrive at a director?
That's a great question, so last time I came to. I believe I scored six five thousand dollars down in fifty, and it was noted that essentially Alford and this will be. They have a hard time getting it. So as I've learned, working with our HR department, anytime we have a title, it comes with a price change. So that's three to five thousand, sixty thousand, what under a specialist, to get to that seventy, ninety, ten to director.
One of the problems that I have is especially, well, a director is just that. Eventually, you're looking at a staff, I'm sure, for for the director as this grows, correct?
I mean, best case scenario, if this grows, we're bringing the business, our EDA, and even their rental property produces its own budget. Maybe they have their own buildings within the county. Yeah, have a staff to go with it, but we think what we have now, and in our kind of watching the game, is just having this one director or one point person, I think that's.
Well, I don't wanna ask all the questions, y'all guys.
Yeah, something that we discussed after the meeting last time, I still don't see what determines success or failure. How do you know that the individual is succeeding and what it is you and we need them to do? It's not easy, but how do you, we we need something to determine, we're just not gonna. Send a paycheck every month, that we're getting something out of it, how do you determine?
Uh, under the requirement, under the requirements, we're asking him or her. At least visiting four businesses per week, we have goals set that it needs to be done under requirements. And basically, if they ain't doing the four, or three to five phone calls per week for. New clientele, there's ground there that we can have terminated, because these are things that we want them to start really looking at. Is same thing converting home-based business to brick and mortar, at least it's telling them at least two. So we do have some things in place that we require him or her to be able to do. If they're not doing that perspective, then it's not doing the job we asked for.
Could you give me an example without naming any names of home-based brick to mortar? Just give me an example.
So the home base could mean someone that has a truck or a motor, something, and they have three trucks, they're founders, ten acres. But it's it's home base and I'm on zoning in different districts, that may be going overcharged. But it was come back and date when it established them. Now we're at a different time, or or maybe employees will report each one.
I think it'll be very interesting, this individual going out and uncovering things that. Probably don't want to be uncovered.
Well, I don't think that's what their their point is here. I think when you're talking about home-based to storefront businesses, you're talking about. You know, the guy who's fixing cars in his backyard, you find a place for him to open a.
Sure.
A legitimate shop, you know, the EDA and the Economic Development Director, you know. Gives them an opportunity to to get a physical business, look at these guys that are, you know, fixing computers in their house or something like that, you give them a storefront, but they, I mean, those, those are examples that come to mind. You know, I don't think we're, I don't think they're talking about, you know, nailing guys that are that are running business without permits, that's more of an enforcement action. The the thing about an economic development director, or economic development, anybody is where, you know, a lot of enforcement positions, which is most of what we're familiar with the county, right? It's a lot of people telling you what what you have to do and what you have to require, economic development directors generally get to be cheerleaders for activities that. Like that, it's a, it's a more creative, and when I say creative, it's it's you're you're building things as opposed to trying to. Slow things down or just regulate in general, you know what I mean? slow things down or just regulate in general, you know what I mean? So yeah, I don't think the example of home-based businesses, again, uncovering people who don't wanna be uncovered. That's not what we're doing. We're taking people who are, are making their living by operating a business at home, giving them an opportunity to grow their business by either linking them with somebody who's got some property, or finding some property form, or doing something that, that gets them into a better space.
I can certainly appreciate an individual bringing them down and inside this building and walking them through the processes. Because it's it's not easy.
But how much credit are they gonna give? I've seen directors or EDA that only got, they were coming in anyway. You see what I'm getting at? Or, or how are you gonna monitor that they really did bring in new business, or was it coming in anyway?
I mean, that, that's simply from a phone call line. You know, we're gonna have some sort of call log to track with this person, whatever, you know, in time to time. We want that next person to be able to kind of pick up where they left off and say, oh, you know, we like this business, we talked to them a year ago, it's kind of what we know about them. Um, yeah, at the end of the day, if my business did work, so I'm in the business development. You know, batting average, four people we talk to, you know, you know, whenever I talk to a customer and say, look, can we do the pages for next level? And we make more out of this one, we're in this, so that's really where the marriage between our departments and there's between our future businesses, our current businesses, and not that we're not doing that currently, but we keep doing it better together, probably. And at the end, they were trying to build their tax base. And some of these businesses are services for our community. You know, right now, according to our cage leakage, we have a handover business from a King and Queen. And we can establish from within the emergency state.
Mister Greenwood, do you have anything?
Yeah, um. I mean, I guess, as I stated at the last meeting, we had an economic development person ten years ago, and we let them go because we couldn't prove anything that they were bringing into the county like somebody was asking for. And I don't, don't think there's gonna be any way to monitor. Uh, as someone else mentioned, how much they're gonna bring in that we wouldn't have got anyway. The problem is, we don't have any pad-ready sites in the county that places can come to. And the problem is, people have to wait too long to go through the process in order to get all those things. You gotta get it reasoned, you gotta get infrastructure. It's just, uh, this amount of money, it's just, I don't think we have this much money to give out at this time, even if it comes out of capital. We can't keep using the capital for everything, because capital's gonna run out. I mean, I like the way that it is under the administrator now, because I don't like the way it was, they were gonna run it themselves, because I mean, I think the administrator and county staff can figure out how better manage the position, but I just don't think that they're gonna have enough work to, to, to constitute that amount of money. Unless we're gonna give them other duties to supplement them with county duties, but I just don't think we have, we have, because everybody seems like this year is asking for more money. I don't know whether we're gonna come up with that. So I don't think we need it.
The thing I might add is that we, we could have, they say, stop it now. The honest truth is after, what, six or seven months on the board, we're not even making financial calls. There's nobody sitting behind a phone trying to get us the business. So as of right now, we can say, yeah, we're not gonna get the business, because we're not, we're not going for it, not trying for it, organically covering it. If this is taking the next step to go after it. And quite frankly, we're, we're not gonna make that investment, we're never gonna get it. It's just always been the organ. That might seem blunt about it. Tractor Supply, we didn't go after them, they realized they wanted to be here. By virtue, when you go to checkout in the hand sale, they say, you know, where's the zip code? You know, King One, King One, they need to be in King One. We're gonna find a way to be here, just find the property and that's the idea in this position. I would love to think that we're gonna snag a big fish like Tractor Supply every time, there's not really lift it. But this individual definitely helped and rolled out the red carpet.
I'll say for mine, this, this is, this is when we left the last meeting, um, the type of cogent vision that I was hoping you guys were gonna bring to this one. Um, this is more well-defined. Um, this is, I think, in more than the range that, that, at least I left thinking that we were probably gonna have to be to get the caliber of individual that we want to run this type of department. Um, I said in the last meeting, I disagree with the contention that the last economic development director didn't provide any value. West Point still has him on the payroll to this day, doing the same job. Um, and they seem to be pretty pleased with, with the work that he's giving them. And I think Kenny's point is, is probably the most well-taken in that if if we don't have somebody whose job this is, then it's always just gonna be luck of who shows up. Um, you know, administration has enough things going on that they can't dedicate the, the totality of effort that it takes to really land some of the businesses that we said we wanted to, to go after and to attract. Plus, as I pointed out in my earlier comment, a lot of the job of, of administration and, and the things that we do here on a daily basis are very different than the job that an economic development director is gonna do. Um, you know, there's a reason that, that the counties that are, that are serious about it and that have had success doing it have this type of position. Um. New Kent's got a very, a pretty well-developed staff, is, is a good one to point at. And, um, you know, Matt runs a really good office over there, and they're having a lot of success over there, just by virtue of the efforts that he's putting in, because it does take somebody on the streets, on the phones, making connections at, at all levels, at, at the state level through, you know, VDP, because if VDP doesn't think that you're gonna be able to, you know, get a client that they send your way. All right, because the way that a lot of the major economic development works, and a lot of economic development in general, doesn't have to be major, you know, there's a, 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 a two million dollar investment that happened over at King and Queen that we were all very happy about at the regional level. That VDP was very involved in. You know, in some localities, that's nothing. The King and Queen was a pretty big investment. We'd be pretty happy to have that level of investment here, too. But it took what we had at the time, is the boots on the ground in King and Queen, um, that were being provided through the regional organization to walk that thing through every step of the process and make sure that planning was on the ball with it, make sure that, that the uh representatives from the, the company were on the ball, making sure that they were moving, advancing this type of project. It takes constant concerted effort and attention um, to make those things happen, or a lot of times they just fall through and they don't happen, or the things that do happen, just because that, you know, the ball kept rolling organically, as we'd say. There, there's nothing there to, to push it across the line, and that's what it tends to be successful in that. You talk about pad-ready sites, you're right, we don't have enough pad-ready sites right now. We're about to add a bunch, obviously, with the PED that we just uh approved. Um, there's gonna be some marketable sites there that an economic development director could really probably do a lot with. Um, and then another part of the job, you know, is gonna be working these landowners that have prime commercial area land to hook them up with clients that, uh, that, that can do something with it. Um, and making connections at the VDP level to get that state money in, because the state has identified that the biggest barrier to economic development in Virginia is the lack of pad-ready sites for all types of commercial development. So the state's put a lot of money in, but if VDP doesn't think you're serious about it, they're not gonna give you any money to do. So, um, you know, I, I, I've been on this for some time now about the need, if we wanna keep talking about economic development and how important it is, then we've gotta put some time and effort into it. And for me, this is what it's going to take. It's either gonna be, we're gonna take this step, and we're gonna be serious about it, or we're not gonna take this step, and we're gonna have to admit that we're gonna focus on some other things right now. That's fine, that's what we wanna do, but if we wanna make economic development something that we're serious about right now, then to me, this is almost what you have to do.
Mister Chair, if I may, I, I think that the requirements that you have for the director, I think some of those things you've set the bar and money to allow. I think that three to five prospect calls a day, I would expect that person to be pounding people time after time. So many times, when you, when you reach out to somebody initially, they are not interested. It's the analogy, sometimes I've dealt with cars my whole life, you know, you'll see this, this car just sitting, sitting. You've knocked on the door before and asked if they wanted unloaded. Next thing you know, that car disappears. Someone caught that person when they were ready to make the move. And to me, an eco, eco, this, this individual needs to do that. He needs to, I mean, he's working a forty-hour week. It ought to be daily. You know, maybe, maybe some of the larger corporations, maybe some of the lon, uh, larger, uh, commercial, uh, businesses. They'll look, they'll say, maybe these people are really, uh, serious. Maybe we need to look at the demographics, that, you know, our punch list again, and, and give them a review. That's that's what I would expect out of this person. And also, uh, Mister Ashcraft, when we first started talking about this, we were talking about, I think, the salary coming out of capital, not, not just the first to get us to the next, uh, budget. Is that correct?
Well, obviously, we haven't identified all revenues for FY twenty-four. But it's pretty clear that the capital budget would be required to carry this into FY twenty-four. That would be the most logical. Uh, it's money that you appropriated a few years ago. It hasn't found a home yet. It seems like a very reasonable investment up for that, those funds. And then you could take the remainder of those funds and, uh, turn them over in other directions.
And that, that would give us the time to look at the position to see how, what, what type of progress we've made, I would think.
Oh, certainly, uh, fifteen months, fifteen to eighteen months is certainly a good barometer as to what's okay.
Would, would, do y'all have a problem with that?
No, it's a misunderstanding, right? We, instead of putting in the budget, we just pulled from the capital for, for an estimated year, year and a half.
To see, to, to see, you know, to do a reasonable evaluation of, of what's happened. I would, I would probably be in favor of that, but to, to create another job immediately and have it in, in the budget, which we're gonna struggle with that budget anyway, I think.
Yeah, nothing's compromised in the middle, but when we put this job person out there, maybe that, that, that's something thousand ninety-two. I think we can get some pretty high caliber people. And I'm not sure, not saying that they've lived success, I would hope that they would have success, but you have the board, you know, good. But I really hate that person can let go, and for some reason, they begin to collapse their own funds. It may take that second turn here.
You would just, yeah, you, you would have to see progress. I would have to see progress, but you know, to, to create a position in not knowing the results, to me, this would be a good way to, to weigh it.
I think Mister Ashcraft answered that question that we would need those funds to get in.
Well, I think his point is that we would, at the minimum, we would need those funds to bridge. All right, what they're talking about now. But I mean, I I mean, I'm okay. Look, there's, there's other things, things maybe we can look at as ways that we measure success, too. I talked about VDP leads. How many VDP leads are we getting right now?
Not many, probably because they know that.
I think I probably did the number chart zero or, or very low, but well, you got it, I think.
Tier four and two, tier five, we're not in the game. Tier four to tier five, which are bad.
So we start measuring those VDP leads that we're, that we're getting just by their, you know, virtue of, of, um, knowing that they're there, and then what they can do. Um, you know, how many of those VDP leads are returning into visits?
Even PDC leads have dried up.
Well, because those VDP leads have dried up, because we don't have a point of contact with, you know, MPA right now, so.
Have we asked Ms. Brown if this is a legal use of capital funds?
It certainly.
Yeah, uh, when, when we moved the money from, uh, to, to fund that two million dollars back in eighteen, I think is when we did that, we actually pulled it from the unassigned fund balance. So all we're doing is then just pulling it, we would still put it in the, the budget as an expenditure, but instead of taxpayers paying for that expense in the general fund, we'd actually do a transfer from the capital fund into the general fund to cover those expenses.
Right. The point not being whether or not it's legal, the point being whether or not it's ideal, um.
If we had pulled that money from the water fund or EMS fund or another fund, yeah, that we would probably be in this problem where we would say, no, that's not a good usage of how that money got to the capital, but it got to the capital from the general fund. Yeah.
Okay. Is it gonna subtract from their two hundred, two million that we gave them, or is it gonna be an additional?
Um, it will reduce what is remaining in the capital fund, and I think we're at like seven hundred thousand right now.
What you said.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Just curious, how will this be advertised through the routine, I guess, Ms. McIntyre? State sites, federal sites, we're gonna throw it out there and see what?
With the, we have a motion.
Um, who's gonna make, you're obviously gonna be the final say on the hire, I suppose. We're gonna have a hiring committee, or we're going to, you're just gonna unilaterally make that?
We would create a, a, an interview committee.
Okay.
Uh, through HR would coordinate that, and, uh, we would have EDA representation, certainly, uh, county staff, and I don't know how often the board supervisor ever gets involved in a director, uh, high level, but maybe one member of the board would even wanna would even wanna serve. That might be, uh, a good balance.
One day, a long time ago, it used to be super common, but less so now. Um, but okay, yeah, that's.
Well, my question is, before we make a motion and physically vote on this, are we looking at capital? Or is this gonna be a budgeted item? Well, it's gonna be budgeted anyway, but are we looking at paying for this position for the first year and a half, or whatever it is?
I'm perfectly fine. I'm perfectly fine using the capital that's there.
I think, I think you answered it right. Well, I mean, capital was available to you, uh, if you, I mean, if you wanted to take it from the general fund, that'd be your choice, but I wouldn't recommend that.
Right. Well, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify, you know, what we would be voting on.
Yeah, because we, I mean, we don't even have a revenue project, and yet it was difficult to even know what type of good decisions. We do know what we have in capital. You know, we're talking about funding it from a higher date to the beginning of FY twenty-four and through FY twenty-four, is what we're talking about doing. I mean, once you get, I mean, we're, at least I am not going to be making the FY twenty-five budget, God knows how many of us are, so then that board can handle that. Uh, but I think this gets the position in-house, and then they can demonstrate its value, which I believe it will, um, with good management.
Again.
So I'll move to, um, allow the county administrator to go forward with advertising, such as creating advertising hiring for, et cetera.
So.
Any further discussion?
Mister Chair, I think we should have a little bit more, like Mister Garber said, a little bit more in the functions. They need to be more than four phone calls. I mean, seven, sixty-three thousand, seventy-three thousand dollars, five phone calls, and a few other things that they do, that's just not adequate. That's just a it's not.
Well, remember, we're also talking about, you know, four weekly, four in-person visits. Uh, in addition to the responsibilities of administration for budgeting the EDA, um, collaboration with the zoning administrator and, and other, you know, planning, travel, et cetera, uh, you know, I again, I, I think the success is gonna be measured much more in, in results than it is, uh, road kind of things, you know, making three to five phone calls a week. What's the purpose if there's not purpose in the phone calls? Um, so, yeah, I mean, I think we'll judge the success of this by how many clients we're actually hearing from, how many results we're landing. Um, how many new connections we're making, more so than whether this person makes, you know, five phone calls a day or, or five phone calls a week, I mean.
Is there any way we can, we can find out how much the West Point person is paid and how much they brought into West Point?
Well, I don't know how much he's brought in. I think he's still basically, you know, uh, I don't know if he's on the payroll for say, or if he still works as a consultant. Um, more or less, but I do know he's still there.
I think we need more information, but.
And Mister Greenwood, the, you know, when we get back to the phone calls, I would hope that we wouldn't hire someone that would say, oh, I hit my fifth phone call. You know, like, we're talking about meaningful calls, meaningful follow-ups. You know, calls, if, if we hired someone that just said, hey, I, I called Carvel. You know, we've hired the wrong person. You know, the right person should be able to just jump right in and, and have a good mindset. You know, we're hiring for a drafted position. It should be a, a seasoned sales veteran or someone who understands the concept. If, if, if we've hired something that doesn't understand the concept, we've done a bad job hiring.
Two comments. Hopefully, we're not going to hire a warm body, just to hire a warm body. We're going to get the, the person that we need, correct? That's the goal. Is it, would it be unusual to offer a base salary and then performance bonuses? I don't know if that's workable in the, in the county type of government, works well on a corporate side. If you set a baseline, if you meet a goal, you get a bonus up to the set limit that we approve. Is that even possible?
We could explore that just more. I mean, certainly, uh, there's a, there's all kind of performance ways in which you can measure. Um, we could also put this person on a, a contract. We don't currently have that on a, uh, only at the county administrator level at this point, but if it has so much attention, then maybe a, a contract might be, uh, appropriate with those kind of provisions in it. Just, just an option.
The, when we said the numbers is seventy-three to ninety-five, hoping that this individual should stay with us, five, ten years, but they need a runway. So I would think that, I would like to get them in the seventies, the first one, just so that we can have merit increases over here. Like, we started really high, we're just still maxed out the goal. But I, I think I, I have asked about the particular mission. Now, I'm not sure that we can.
Commission. They get a percentage of the. No, I would, I would discourage from that. The bonuses are certainly enough. Uh, uh, that's an economic development, uh, tool that directors, uh, receive. If it's, if it's in the, uh, the language of their, of their contract.
And really, the big thing was just starting something new, right? If we have somebody in place that they would know what we're doing. I think I know we've done a lot of, I mean, it's important. But, uh, I mean, the thing is that once we get this right, it wasn't the hard part. It should get started. Once it started, it should roll and we should be doing well. We should have a track record, you know, and stuff like that. So I know this, this is tough, but I've opened three, four, five years now. We've got someone in place and we're talking about the good thing. And if we, but if we do make it too tough on them, it also might not hire someone.
Down West Point's part of it.
That's sort of thought, but my point being that the, 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 the guy that we were told wasn't doing any good work is still working for West Point and they're, they're pleased with what, what they got. And of course, we weren't paying him full-time work. We were paying very much part-time work. And I think expecting full-time results, which was, um, an exercise in futility, uh, on everybody's part, but. Again, it's my point. If, if economic development is going to be a priority, this is, this is where we've got to get the ball on. We can't, we can't committee our way out of, um, you know, the situation that we're in now with economic development. They're requiring hours for time.
And certainly with everything that's going on now is probably the best time.
Out of that, we're, we're three years too late, but you know, it, I, I don't think, I don't think that changes the value that this position can bring. Because even if things do go the way that they've been telling us they're going to go for the last two and a half years now, which we're, we're, we're all still here and it hadn't happened, but, um, you know, you're going to need somebody helping the businesses navigate survival in those, in those instances. And certainly, uh, it was a function that we found ourselves playing, um, you know, at the regional level as well, uh, bringing together resources to, uh, enable, you know, especially a lot of those, those water-based businesses over in, in the far part of the middle peninsula that were really struggling when restaurants shut down, kept them alive to where now we're on the backside of it and they're, you know, they're, they're thriving again. But there were some real existential threats that without a focus on economic development and the knowledge and the connections to bring forth the resources that those businesses would not have served.
And the most recent example, I, I guess we can turn to is a Nestle Purina, uh, upgrade. Uh, lead came down from the EDP. We started working, I was more or less the primary liaison, working with the, uh, county administrator at the time, Mr. Hudgens, when he was back in, uh, buildings, uh, commissioner. And it was a weekly thing. So I, I can appreciate.
Just for one project.
One project. You know, a, a big one, hundred and eighty-two million dollars, but still, I understand the processes that need to take place. And I agree with Mr. Moskowski that it is probably overdue, but I, I caution. So we got to watch this very closely.
And the motion we have is a, as it, it states in here, are we, are we changing anything from the phone call?
I can't see. I mean, look, this is an outline. All right. You know, we'll have more opportunities for input on this as well. Um, I think burdening this outline with a whole lot of, you know, just additive stuff is, is probably not productive, but we, as, as the board overseeing the county administrator, will certainly have opportunities for further input as we refine our ideas, what maybe specific tasks and individuals should be taking on. I don't think here is the time or place to do that.
And, sorry, I'll drop this like if, if, if maybe, just maybe, we have a younger individual out of college who, who is hungry, who thinks that maybe there's the right person. That maybe can be a supervisor role. And it doesn't have to be this higher price. But we just have to see who comes. I'm very confident we're going to get someone probably from a, from a, or a, a business person to do this role. Or they do a great job, but at, at least we have the fluid there.
All right. All of that being said.
Do we have a sec? Yeah, we did. Okay.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Moskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Nay.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Chairman Hodges?
Hi.
And craft, uh, engaging and architect with the design of the beautiful library.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, I know it's still very much fresh on your mind, uh, the discussions that took place in last year's budget regarding library services, uh, for the county. Our relationship with Paw Monkey, uh, regional library system has been longstanding. But there has been a number of questions that have been raised, uh, since that, uh, those budget discussions about the functionality of, uh, of really both libraries that exist in the, in the county. One in West Point and certainly one down at, uh, Central Garage. Uh, it's been most recent that, uh, the board has committed to make an investment in upgrading the West Point, um, library, and that is, uh, that is progressing. Now, what I have before you this evening is just the first step to investigating the possibility of upgrading the bricks and mortar side of, of the library, uh, that we have in, uh, in King William at this time with a new, with a new building. Uh, just recently, the board has agreed to swap properties that it once owned in Kennington to take over a piece of property that is, uh, along Route thirty. It's going to border, uh, the possibility of a new, uh, subdivision, a fifty-five plus, uh, request that will be coming to you at the end of the month, uh, under public caring. This feels like a good time to, for you to have discussions about retaining an architect that would provide a full scope of services to give you all the options that you would need to make a good decision as to whether you want to invest in a library in the next, I'll say months to come. It could be years to come. That's your decision. But at least you would know what you're looking for, uh, in terms of size. Uh, we can estimate costs, uh, certainly usage. Uh, is it, uh, is it a building that could also serve the community, uh, through meeting space and other types of, uh, of activities as well as having the library as its, uh, as its fundamental purpose? There's been a lot, as a, as I said, there's been a lot, uh, explained over the last several months about where we are in, at this point in time, when it comes to library services and libraries have shifted their, their, uh, their purposes over the years, the way they deliver their, uh, product. But essentially, it's the same mission that they had when he first started years ago. That's to serve the public, provide them with materials that will, uh, broaden, uh, and enlarge their educational focus uh, for all ages. Uh, it's just not a school-based, uh, uh, audience right now. It's, uh, it's kids, it's, uh, it's the older generation. It's anybody who, uh, who finds libraries, uh, attractive. So what you have in your, uh, in your packet is, uh, is just a draft. It's, uh, it's an RFP that Mr. Hudgens had, was able to work with Mr. Shepley of, uh, of Library System to, uh, show an example of, uh, of what could be used as a request for proposal. And if you look through it, it's very comprehensive. Uh, it not only would reach the, uh, um, the quality of, of providing us with estimated costs, but it would also lead the community and engage the community and, uh, in, in getting their input. Uh, working with county staff as well as the board supervisors on everything that we would need to make a good decision if we want to make an investment of this size. This doesn't commit you to anything other than just, uh, gathering, uh, information. And, uh, we feel comfortable proposing to you that the cost of this architect would be out of the proffer fund. Uh, proffers are used for education, recreation, and certainly this would fall, uh, as a subset to, uh, to the recreation and leisure uh, in the county. So there would be no general fund dollars that would be spent. Uh, at least we wouldn't propose any, uh, for this particular, uh, purpose. So we can certainly walk through any portion of the RFP, but I would, I would just caution you that this is not the final version. We, we want to tweak it a little bit more. It has some, it has some things in it that I'm not sure of, like a, a, a library consultant that would assist the architect. Uh, you know, I don't know that we need something like that. Maybe they have somebody on staff that would assist them. I don't know, but, but all in all, it, uh, you know, it, it, it really does what I think we would need to make, uh, a good decision based on all the facts that we need to generate.
Where, where do the funds come?
Proffer fund.
Proper.
That would be the recommendation.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
And have we talked with Paw Monkey about assisting any finance?
With the finances?
Finance.
Yes, we, we, Mr. Shepley is certainly on board with helping us engage, uh, up to this point now. If we decide to invest in a building, then we certainly would, would request from them, just as the town of West Point was very successful in getting them to, uh, to assist them. Yes, we would.
Mr. Ashcraft, I've, I've asked privately, but publicly, typically you would start with an RFP, request for information. That goes out and canvases industry to, hey, look, we're interested in building something here. Give us some input. RFPs typically indicate you have funding ready to go, or for, for the most part, you, you fully intend to build a library and you have funding identified. I, I just, just wanted the discussion to happen as to why you, you targeted an RFP versus an RFI.
Well, Ms. Moore, I, I think, at least from a staff perspective, and, and if you stop and think about it, I think you have to, you've gone past the RFI, uh, if I process. The purpose of the library in King William, what we would like it to be. Now, I know there's a debate about whether we would want to run our own or whether we would want to continue with the, uh, uh, with the district. But all that being said, you have really give a close examination of the library services in this county and what you would, where you would like it to go. I think if we hadn't done that, then maybe it would be necessary to do the informational, uh, piece. But we've heard from the public, we've had public meetings, uh, you know, we've had good public debate on, on expenditures and what we pay into that, uh, library. The present location, we know, is undersized for what we think a growing population needs to have. So that would be the main reason that I believe that staff would recommend at this time an RFP, which is non-minding. It's all informational, so this just goes further in gathering, I think, more information than what an RFI would. And it would get you further to the decision-making point than if you spent three, four, five months going through an RFI.
Thank you. Just wanted it on public.
Sure.
Is there a lease on the present bill?
I believe so. I do not know that. I know that it's been pretty regular, that, that twenty-five thousand, maybe twenty to twenty-five thousand has been, uh, paid for, for a number of years.
That is Paw Monkey Regional Library paying that.
Of course, we, through your appropriation.
I think it's, it's needed, it's warranted. It's why we did the whole land swap thing in the first place. So I think if it makes sense to take this step, we need to, to, we need to know, you know, what it's going to take if we, if we decide we do want to build another building, which again, I, I think in, in taking the action that we took to acquire land, to do something, we agree that it's a, it's a needed project. This will let us know what it'll take, give us an idea of when we can do it. Get the ball rolling towards that outcome.
So the, the architectural design of this, we will, we will say pretty much what our vision is.
You will have full input.
And then if it comes back, maybe, which it possibly could over budget or over what we're comfortable with. He could modify.
Certainly based on square footage.
Yeah.
We all have an idea maybe as to what we think the building could look like. Maybe it's one floor, two floor. We know we only have a three acre lot that, uh, that's been given to us. I don't think, and there's no way really, if this new subdivision goes in, that there's going to be, uh, uh, any wiggle room in, in that. So the, you know, the ground is what the ground will be. Once you add parking and, uh, you know, any landscaping that might be around it, it's pretty much locked in. Um, I just think the bigger question with the library is will it serve more than one purpose? And I think I've heard from the board supervisors say, especially in that area of the county, we have nowhere to meet that we consider to be adequate for public, uh, purposes. And this could certainly provide that.
Is the land transfer been completed?
No, not yet. Um.
So we're odd for us to do the, the architecture that we don't have the length.
Well, I think, uh, the average, the average land for a library would be about three acres. So if there's some reason why we didn't use this particular piece of property, I mean, I would think we, if we really wanted a library, we would go scout for, for a, uh, a parcel would be similar to this. So I think all the information that you're gathering, except for any, uh, ingress and egress and that kind of thing, uh, is going to be, is going to be the same no matter where you put it.
Mr. Greenwood, do you have any questions?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. Just like I said, it seems like that's why we decided to swap sites and I think we should have our own building. Like I said, that way we could have another place where we could have a conference area or something to use besides just administration building parks, all right?
All right, needed a motion to move forward with refining and sending out this. All right, I'm. All right. I'll make that motion.
Second. Second.
All right. Any further? Chris.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
All right. I think you're still up in the discussion of the adjustment of the board supervisor salaries beginning January one, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chairman, let me make it, uh, clear as I, as I, uh, opened this discussion is that this, uh, agenda was brought, was never brought forth by any single member of the board supervisor sitting in front of me. Um, the reason that it's before you is because just like any other inflationary item, uh, from time to time, everyone needs to look at, uh, the state of, of, uh, of where things are. And in this case, the board supervisor salaries have not been adjusted in the county for quite some time. The proposal before you would not affect you as individuals as you sit on this board right now. It would not take place until January the first of twenty twenty-four, in which that would follow, uh, the general election, in which, uh, five members would be elected at that time. But it is worth looking at, and I had, uh, uh, Ms. McIntyre, our human resources manager, uh, to, uh, to give you a list of salaries as they pertain to, uh, to other counties, both in our, uh, population and also in our region. The board supervisors, uh, it's now eleven, eleven thousand? Ten, ten thousand and eleven, and eleven-two for the chair. And that's per year. If you just go on, on the, uh, the past few years when other county employees, uh, have, uh, have received compensation of three, uh, three and a half percent. Anything within that area could possibly be lined up, uh, and not be out of line with what I would consider to be inflation, inflation. This board particularly has been generous, not only with your time, but with your, uh, reimbursement requests, uh, for mileage and, and things like that. Uh, this is a large county. Uh, you're all over the place at, at different times. Uh, that's what you, when you were elected, that's what you signed up for and you've taken that, uh, creed very religiously. But it is not out of the question for board of supervisors, uh, to adjust the salary for the, for the next board that gets elected. And this would have to be, uh, decided by June the thirtieth, uh, in order for it to take effect in, uh, January of twenty twenty-five. So I want to make it clear, it is not giving yourselves a raise. Yes, maybe, uh, uh, some of you may be on that board in January the first of twenty twenty-four when this takes place. But to say, or to say that you're casting a vote to give yourselves a raise is not accurate. And it should be stated, uh, right now. This is a county staff recommendation. It is, it is not something that any member of the board brought up.
Mr. Ashcraft, what is the recommendation again?
Well, the recommendation was from staff would be, um, at, at least two and a half and in the two, two and a half, three percent range, uh, range. I never figured that out, but it would be something like, what, twelve? Uh, neither would be something like twelve thousand, maybe. Yeah, we were looking for a twelve, at, at twelve fifty and then the chairman would be thirteen, thirteen seventy maybe or something. Keep in line with that.
Take. I know you haven't finished the proposal yet from March, March thirteenth. But does it look like we're going to be able to give the employees a raise?
I think so. I think so. Cause we're going to try to, uh, do it a little bit differently. Um, there's a core group of employees who we feel like are, uh, uh, on the lower end of the scale that need to be brought up and, uh, the others would be, would be treated fairly as well. But yes, I believe we're going to be able to, uh, approve that. I recommend that. They'd be up to you to approve it.
Mr. Ashcraft, it, it appears that this board is compensated, comparatively speaking, very well compared to other counties of similar size. Am I reading this right?
Well, uh, I'd say that's correct. That, that's an accurate statement. I think, uh, again, um, historically, that's been your number. And everything is going up. The cost of everything has, uh, has changed from the last time that, uh, and I, I don't even know the date when the salaries were adjusted, but I know it's been quite a while. At least two or three boards ago, maybe longer. Um, you know, I, it's just something that, uh, that boards take a look at from time to time.
I would like to know how many of these counties only have one meeting per month also?
I, I, I would, I would say that. And I feel like I, I don't know how much of this conversation I would participate in other than providing context, but, because I'm not going to be here. And so regardless of how I, right, I, I don't, I don't feel right inside. But I will say that when, that was that? When I, when I first got elected, when I was green with the first elect, we had one meeting a month. We had one meeting a month. We had what? Two or three extra budget sessions, maybe one, maybe two extra budget sessions, school meeting and the all-day budget.
Right.
Right.
And we didn't have all these commissions either.
Um, right. And now we have the baseline twenty-four meetings. We'll be meeting for after next week, for the week off. We'll be meeting for five weeks in a row, plus Tuesday meeting. So yeah, just for context, it's not been adjusted since I've been on. I don't remember when the last adjustment even took place. It was before my time. But I will say that the, the duties of the board have changed and have increased.
Chairman, I'd like to point out too, we, we didn't have, never had an increase. That's what I wanted to know. And nobody seems to be able to find out when the last increase was, but our board did decrease our salary. As you know, we, we cut the health insurance. So that in effect was a cut to the board supervisor's salary.
Your entire board salary that you already did it because I blew money out.
I know. Yep, yep. And, and like I said, none of us put any money in for mileage or anything that I know of.
Rare.
And what do you need tonight?
We can go a number of directions. We could try to reach a number or I could come back, uh, at, at a future meeting with, with a recommend date or some couple of numbers, one for the chairman and, and one for the, uh, the body as a whole. Uh, and then.
One of the employees get roughly.
Well, three and a half percent is, uh, yeah, three and a half percent is what it's been that way for two, three years, two, three years now.
Mr. Ashcraft, I just had a quick question. This may be strange, but, uh, I mean, we always, uh, provide a increase for constitutional officers. We're constitutional officers. How come we're not pushed into that category as well? It's just a question. I don't know why, but the other constitutional officers get there. Uh, like you said, cost of living or raises every year.
You're not paid by the comp board.
Thank you, Mr. Miskowski. That was my response. You're not paid by the compensation board. And that's why, yeah, that's the, that's the biggest reason. Your, your funds come totally from the general fund every year.
Thank you.
So if you would like for us to come back with a, with an extra proposal or authorize us.
When we, when, when we first started discussing this, back in December, when it was first put out, but like, what are even your thoughts on this? My thought had been, you know, cause again, it has been increased for a minimum of the last eleven years. In any way, I don't know how long it's been before that, um, would be to take it to eleven thousand per members and twelve-three-twenty for the chair, which in effect would be ten percent from where it is now, but acknowledging that it has not been adjusted at all. But again, it doesn't matter to me.
I don't think any of us do this for the money. So, no.
So you're looking at one percent a year if I, if I read roughly.
Yeah. But that's just a suggestion, um, that, that I came up with when I was thinking about it back in December. It's not, not anything based in. Again.
So has Stephen been on the board longer than you or?
Same. Same, same, yeah, but.
So everyone will know. Do you want to tell the, those who do not know, how many years y'all been on the board?
This is my twelve.
Yep, this is her twelve. And I don't know how many times before that it was ever raised.
Did, did I also understand you correctly? I don't know whether Travis said it or, or Stephen, that when y'all first entered the board, uh, serving on committees and, uh, other boards was not a requirement or?
Well, it was never a requirement, but it used to get a per diem for it.
For what?
Yeah.
What was that?
Uh, it was like fifty dollars per meeting for like recommending.
Okay.
Stuff like that. We did away with that. First year we reached.
Like I said, we've done.
Anyways, I would always just hand them back in and say nothing.
What was Percy's recommendation?
Actually, I'm sorry. Actually, I did not make a number recommendation, Mr. Greenwood. I was, um,
You were estimating.
Trying to place some percentages, but I was looking at a percentage of the last two or three years. I think Mr. Miskowski has framed it more accurately where you would be about one percent every year since it's been, uh, previously set. And that would bring you to the numbers that he's talking about, which is, which are, uh,
Eleven thousand per member.
Eleven thousand per member.
Twelve-three-twenty for the chair.
Twelve-three or twelve-three maybe, uh, for the chair.
I'll make that motion.
No, sir. I will re-emphasize that this chart here, we are well above the average compared to other counties. I'll just leave it at that.
We're right in there. It's all over the place really. Until you get to the, until you get to the big dogs.
Well, I can, I can tell you, I did a little bit of research today. Middlesex has one meeting per month. Essex has one meeting per month. Richmond County has one meeting per month. Westmoreland has one meeting per month, plus an additional, uh, meeting when, when they, uh, need to schedule, uh, zoning in with their, uh, meeting. So we, you know, these, these figures are not necessarily many of these are probably just one meeting per month. But, you know, without looking at the rest of them, I don't know. Do y'all want to put it off and maybe look at these other counties to get a rundown on how many counties?
Motion, did we get a second? Didn't you say?
Yeah.
I think, to be honest, I think we put off too. Sometimes, sometimes we just need to either make a decision, go with it or not.
Well, we've made a motion.
And any further discussion? Chris.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Thanks.
Mr. Miskowski.
I am going to, for the first time in my life, abstain because I am the only person who has declared that they will not be here. So, um, I feel like it's best left to those who at least are going to take a crack at it.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that's, that will be the recommendation that will be in the, in the budget. And obviously the board still has an opportunity to, uh, to see that again because it'll be part of the budget document. That's right. Just a good change. Uh, it's already been, uh, alluded to during, excuse me, during this discussion about health insurance. And again, this is another staff-driven, uh, uh, concept to bring before you this evening. Um, it is not, uh, unusual for members of the board of supervisors, uh, to be eligible for the county's health insurance plan. I know, uh, within the last, uh, few years, uh, this benefit, uh, was eliminated. I bring this back again to you this evening for discussion as to whether you would want to participate, uh, as part of the county's health insurance, uh, program. I, I would ask Ms. McIntyre to come, uh, up to, because she, she can answer specific questions about the plan. Uh, now I will say this, one question was, uh, was raised, uh, when I, I floated this proposal to the members of the board, uh, that, uh, could compensation be received in lieu of not taking the plan? Uh, that does not exist currently within our employee base. That would have to be a shift in which we would have to, uh, offer that to all employees and not just to the members of the board supervisors. And if the board wanted us to, uh, explore that option, uh, in, in some way. And I would, uh, also reiterate before I ask, uh, I needed to come up is that this proposal did not come from any member of the board of supervisors. This is simply a staff, a recommendation based on what is going on throughout the state that members of the board, just like any other employee in the county. And in many cases, you are employees. You're not just elected members of, uh, of the board. You are employed. And this would make you eligible for that health insurance benefit.
Did kind of a little summary, um, that was in the packet. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to either answer them or find out the answer and get back.
The increase would be what? About nine hundred per member?
If, if a member elected with the five hundred deductible plan, which is the lower uh, premium plan, then the county's portion of that is about eight hundred and, uh, eighteen dollars a month. Then the employee is about eighty dollars per month.
And what if they took the premium?
If they took the higher one, I want to say it's about nine. Don't remember it off the top of my head. It's a little more expensive, um, maybe around eleven hundred per month that the county pays on that one. And that's again, that's for an individual. That's not for a plus one that would include a, a spouse or another family member that's eligible or for a family plan.
And I guess you know how I'm going to vote because I pushed to get rid of this when I was elected eight, eight years ago, uh, and I'll vote the same.
Very, very few counties offer that anymore, correct?
There, there were not a lot in our area who offer it, uh, but there are a few that offer that option for the board members to subscribe to insurance.
And historically, from what I understand, when it was implemented, insurance was cheap. And a lot of people on the board were farmers and didn't have access to it, is what I understand.
Um, just one other thing, it'd be, um, full-time employees right now are the only ones who are eligible for insurance. Our part-time employees, we do not make that, uh, a benefit that's, um, that they're eligible for. So.
Looking at it from a fifty thousand foot level, is this a disincentive to lure good people?
Level, man, come on.
I'm sorry?
So that's five.
Sixty thousand for the balloon. Yeah. Way up there. Is, is it a disincentive to, to attract good people to run?
Yes.
Ironically, as good as my health insurance is, I don't have vision or dental. I have to pay for that out of my own pocket.
Well, you own Medicare. you own Medicare, I'm on Medicare. I wouldn't use it anyway. You, you are correct. I think that those out there that may stir the troubled waters and want to run, you know, healthcare is a big thing. You know, it might entice some people to make that move and, and serve. You know, it wouldn't be any benefit to me, Bill. Uh, you, you're military. I don't, I don't know whether, are, are you Medicare also?
Everything is covered with the exception of vision and dental.
Which I don't have yet. I pay out of pocket.
The county plan does cur- uh, currently cover vision and dental. It is not something that can be split out and just selected if somebody joins us and they just want dental. That's not an option. You have to have the entire plan, but it does cover it.
With the figure you gave, it'd probably be about fifteen percent higher than that.
It can potentially be. I should know in the next couple of weeks.
So initially, really, the highest thing would be about a thousand or something.
I, I would say that's a good, uh, baseline estimate, just to give you an average.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we reject this health insurance coverage.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion to reject in a second. Any further discussion? Chris.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Nay.
Mr. Hodges.
Hi.
I have to think there's a second one. We're moving on.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. The next item up is board supervisor's request, and I think I think Mr. Garber started down on this one, right?
Uh, well, no, I think it was you actually first. I, I don't remember. You're the, you're the man.
That's a terrible.
Yeah, I'll go first if you want me to. The only thing I have, I would like to maybe if we could get tax back on here on a Zoom meeting prior to the the next auction, whenever that is. Originally, I think they projected that it was going to be sometime in January.
They, they canceled that for for obvious reasons. Their information was not accurate that they had published.
Okay.
And, uh, but I believe there will be one within a shorter period of time than what it, it had been before.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to ask, you know, a few questions.
Perfect.
That's all.
I, I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
I've, I've had enough requests over the last several meetings we've been together. Of course, one of my requests tonight was to have, um, all points with us, but they've got, uh, a good, good reason, uh, for, uh, having to beg off of this one, and we'll have him in front of us on the twenty seventh, so we'll get that update done otherwise. Um, yeah, I'm good right now.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yeah, the same thing of just, uh, having all points or, or both of those companies, maybe Virginia Power and Rapid Panic Electric to come and tell how they're implementing their distribution of this new internet. Like I said, I'm getting stories all over the place. As I said last month, uh, people are seeing the utility people walk in the yards, and they're telling them that they're not going to get it for two years. I would like to have some definite, I, we were told definitely eighteen months for every citizen of King Lake County. So if we could have some kind of definitive answer, some kind of, I know now we've found out that it's not covering the whole county, so if we could have when each section is going to be on. I know they said they were going to wait, not turn anybody on till they could turn everybody on. So if we could have some kind of clarification on any of that, that would be great.
Get that, just that?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I, I'm really, uh, I don't have anything, uh. And the only thing I can say is, it's, it's probably going to be a tough budget. You may have to come back and get it, so I would be able to make something. I don't know. But we'll do, and with that also, we'll do what we need to do, uh, as we always do. And with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to convene and close meeting in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions and the performance and resignation of specific employees in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A three of the Code of Virginia regarding real property used for a public purpose specifically pertaining to the acquisition of real property for a public purpose in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel, consultants, and or staff on a matter of which actual litigation in which the county is involved, because discussion in an open meeting may adversely affect the litigating position or negotiating strategy of the board in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A eight of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel on a specific legal matter regarding bonds requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel.
Okay.
Further discussion? Chris.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
But we should be back. I don't know.
It'll be a while.
Call this meeting back to order.
Mr. Chairman, we reconvene in an open session.
Second, second.
Chris.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. Chairman, that's our one.
Second.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Right, and?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty three dash fifteen, appointing Ms. Stacy Johnson to the VA two fifty planning committee through the commemoration period of twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six.
Second. Second.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, make a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Curry, to extend his term of, for six months through June of twenty twenty four, and also to, uh, allow Ms. Vida Fraser to remain in District Four until June twenty five.
Second.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. Mr. Chair. I move adjournment.
Chris.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moran.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned.